Thank you, everybody, for coming. It is 6:33. We're going to call our meeting forward. We have a full council today, so we have a quorum. We're going to start with the invocation and the pledge. Eternal Father, loving God, Creator of everything, and Author of grace everlasting, everlasting, we invite your presence upon our gathering today. May we find during our time together a common good, a greater purpose, and many productive means to bring glory to you. May we be united in heart and mind, as well as lift our prayer into a realm we cannot see. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Janey, that brings us to item three, public comments.
Um, we have said maybe. Deb Sabresuwa?
Uh, I'd like to make my public comments after the, uh, in the EDC meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. And Ms. Angela King?
Um, I don't know if I should make mine now or later, so, because y'all let me know where it belongs, but at the last meeting, you guys were talking about the funds with the grant for the revamping of City Hall. I wasn't at the meeting where you guys discussed it originally, I apologize, but I think a lot of us, including myself, are just curious what the grant is covering, like what all is being done to City Hall, so we can understand why the funds are needed to complete all the revamping. So if you could elaborate on that and maybe explain to us what all that looks like.
Sure, we'll be happy to do that. If you don't mind, we'll do it when we get down a little farther in the agenda to the item.
Okay. I guess that's it. Karen signed up on this segment.
Item four, conduct a public hearing on the proposed 2024 comprehensive draft plan. This was our last public hearing and introduced the comprehensive plan that our team worked on for about a year now. Plan is complete and we're ready for the council to consider that on the next item to adopt it. But, so this is a public hearing if anyone had final questions or comments about it. All right. Hearing nine, we'll move on to item five, consider and take action on ordinance of the city of Simonton, adopting the comprehensive plan 2024 for the city of Simonton, set future review timelines and directing for the plans posting. It's all contained within the document.
I know there was documentation regarding the finances to pay for that, sorry if y'all can't hear me, um, to pay for the comp plan and the costs and all of that, but I don't have any information regarding what that final cost was, because I'm, obviously, I think everybody in this room is ready to move with the comp plan.
We did not prepare the summary of the costs separate from adopting the plan, but it's within budget. Either of y'all folks know the number off the top of your head, I don't really like to spitball, I, I think that we'll be happy to bring that at the end of the meeting. But there is no overage from the budget that was worked out during the budget season last year.
Has any of it been paid?
I'm sorry?
Is any of that been paid?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we know how much of that has been paid and still remaining? If there's not an overage, is it right on the money? Is it off the money? Is there savings?
Well, the finance of it was not on the agenda for today, so I would rather not give you estimations of what's been paid. There's been, there was a monthly plan of which chapters would be completed in each month and each section, and bill according to what those months are in your original proposal that you had during budget time. We'd be happy to put that on next month's agenda. This is adopting the work that's been done to develop the plan. So for item five, do we have a motion to, um, adopt the ordinance?
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I'm second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. The motion carries and congratulations, council and CPAC and really the city of Simonton. This is a huge step in the right direction for us to have the comprehensive. Thank you so much. Arthur O.
Thank you.
All right, item six, we are opening the public hearing. This is the second public hearing on the proposed strategic partnership agreement with Waller County MUD, its municipal utility district number two, and a limited annexation to an margin extend the boundary limits of the said city to include certain tract of land being of for about 344.4 acres. Phil, would you mind giving us a short version like you did last week, so that folks that might not have been here can have the glimpse of what we're talking about?
Of course. Uh, so this specifically is to grant a, or discuss the strategic partnership agreement with Waller County Municipal Utility District Two. It already entered into a development agreement, the city did in like 2018, so it's an executed agreement between the developer, the MUD, and the city at the time, a negotiated instrument that said for future development, future opportunity, where property could be brought into the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, and then entered into a strategic partnership agreement, which would allow for, among other things, sort of a sales and use tax application on any commercial property. So this 344.4 acres is slated for commercial, and that's what the strategic partnership agreement covers, is any commercial property in those 344.4 acres. And so this is the second public hearing, will, the second, this will be an ordinance to enter into the strategic partnership agreement, as well as to annex for limited purposes the area, and that limited purpose being the application of sales and use tax.
So I was looking at that map about where that is, and it seemed like our ETJ encompasses that area currently? Is that, that 344 acres?
No, we, there will be a resolution to extend the ETJ and include that area.
And where is that, where is that property? Okay?
It's at I-10 and Woods Road.
Okay. I was looking at the route on the map wrong there, okay.
Does part of our ETJ currently go along the border of it? It just doesn't encompass all of the land?
Yes, my, my understanding is the ETJ does touch, and it has to, to order to extend, and this will just bring the rest of that area in, as well as specifically, so specifically this will allow for those, kind of the hash marks, if you will, to be brought in under that limited purpose annexation.
Any other questions or comments during the hearing at this pace?
Can I take a copy of that?
Sure.
All right, cool, thanks.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. Item eight, consider and take action on a resolution expanding and extending the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Simonton, Texas, by accepting a petition on a certain tract of land of on, or about 344.4 acres. Council, do we have a motion?
I want a motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Item nine, consider and take action on an ordinance of the city council of Simonton, Texas, to enter into a strategic partnership agreement with Waller County Municipal Utility District Two, and to annex for limited purposes a certain tract of land being of for about 344.4 acres. Council, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Did you catch both?
To clarify.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, item 10, presentation on the city of Simonton's public works road repair. This is an update or a, bring something back to the top item, because road repairs were brought up in our last, a week ago. So the map that you can see behind Mr. Calpamie's head, and that council has in your minders, this is from developing our grant application. Craig, you can give this a whole lot more eloquence than I can? Would you like to take that away?
Yeah, so this, basically, this map summarizes kind of what the CDVG grant that the city applied for and that we're very optimistic that we'll get, just, unfortunately, Simonton slash Valley Lodge is not qualified for low to moderate income, so that means those projects get awarded first. We have started to see notices to other cities that are in the same boat of not meeting the LMI, kind of get their initial notices that, hey, congratulations, you're moving forward, but still, there's still a bunch outstanding. So what this is, is we've developed this out of maximizing the grant funds for kind of the top, kind of the top priority projects that was identified in some drive-throughs. So focusing on, I'll touch on the drainage first, just to touch on those, but it's replacing the culverts underneath Fort Ben Drive, where the gate structure is and where the main pump operations are. It's replacing the culverts under Wagon, which if anybody's crawled under there like I have, you notice those culverts need to be replaced, more so the ones on Wagon, but we want to, we want to make sure the ones on Fort Ben get taken care of as well, because they don't have probably much life left, some of them anyway. And the other ones is cleaning up some of the roadside ditches that we weren't able to touch in the last CDVG project, so on Custer, Indian, Tejas, a small portion of Suri, again, cleaning up those ditches from the previous project to extend, extend that. And then from roadway, because we can use the CBG for roadway projects, it is basically reworking all of Wagon, reworking most of Larriett, actually two, pretty much all of Larriett, and then touching at least the part of Wag, Wrangler, that is from 1093 to Bronco. Let's see, missing anything on this exhibit? So that was packaged up to maximize the CDVG dollars. One of the things that, when this project hopefully comes to fruition and we get the grant, the hope is that, at least from a bid perspective, we would bid some additional roads. That way, if these come in under budget, like, for instance, the last CDVG project that we bid, it actually came in under budget, so we were able to add some additional ditches into that work. And so that's kind of the hope here. But that being said, attached to this, we did a, kind of a breakdown of future projects, identifying more roadwork that needs to, that could occur, using the general fund. And basically, how that would, you know, how that would look, at least what we've, what we've conceptualized, working with Fort Ben Road and Bridge, similar to what the city's done on other road projects in the city, is the city would buy the material and Road and Bridge would do the work. So that next phase that's in the table that council has was mainly based on what Fort Ben Road and Bridge thought they could do, because they can't, they can only do so much at once, because they have other obligations across the county, and so that was that first thing. And then, of course, if, you know, obviously, if the grant, for whatever reason, falls through, which I'm not saying it is, and we're very hopeful, talking to the grant administrator, that we will get this grant, it's just a matter of the exact timing, but if it does fall through, basically, these projects in the CDVG would kind of get bumped to kind of that first priority for the general fund, which, obviously, what's in the general fund for all these projects is over a million dollars, so we'd have to pair it back with what the city could do on a, on a smaller scale. But again, Road and Bridge's commitment is they'll continue to work with the city the best they can to make as much of these roads happen when they have availability and when the city funds are available. So fortunately, we don't have a crystal ball, and the grant writer doesn't have a crystal ball when we think the grant will be awarded. We're actually, the initial thought that everybody hoped is that the non-emergency projects, as they kind of call them, for LMI, low to moderate income, would happen towards the end of last year, first quarter of this year, and so we are in the second quarter now, or soon to be in the second quarter, so we're hoping here in the next two to 10 months.
Right.
That we'll, we'll get those funds, so. But yeah, that's, hopefully I did an okay job summarizing.
You did, thank you.
But, you know, these costs, just, so if anybody, you know, basically, all these costs, so for CDVG, a lot of these costs, again, are based on, you know, are based on bidding the projects, so, you know, falling in line with the CDVG, but there are some ways that maybe we could partner with the county to maximize this, we just have to first get the grant, know the exact amount, which we're hoping it's the full 1.2 or whatever million it was.
Yeah.
Yep. And so that's kind of where we stand and what we're hoping for, so.
Thank you, Craig.
Can I ask?
Sure.
Just to tell you how far out of loop I am in, in being in city politics. During our administration, it was $60,000 or $70,000 a mile for, for the material for Fort Ben County to renew roads. What does it cost today?
Today, they're quoting $125,000 a mile for overlay.
Okay.
And $275,000 a mile for rebuild.
For reconstruction?
Yes.
Okay. I, I, that's appalling, but.
Yeah, Jeff, you kind of.
You better be thankful.
You can throw a horse and buggy down.
Hey, I've got another city that has volunteers that are going out there to get asphalt to patch roads, so I mean, that's all the time.
So I wanted to make sure that everybody had a chance to understand where we are about roads, so this grant has not been awarded, Craig just said this, but I'm going to repeat, the grant hasn't been awarded, we have applied, we're in a holding pattern, waiting, hoping that our turn is next, when they start to award urgent need versus low to moderate income. Okay? So that's $1.2 million, we've got plenty of work that could be done, and you did a great job of laying it out. This is in the grant application. The second part of that, that he was referring to, the general fund request, there's another, a chart that goes with this, and it'll be in the public documents, but the total of that is four roads, two full street replacements and two streets for overlay that are next on the priority list. Those have already been requested from, to be on the Fort Ben County Road and Bridge schedule for this year. We don't know yet if we're going to make it on the schedule for this year because of their other commitments, but that's Buckboard and Hondo for full street replacement and Camden and Custer for street overlay. We don't have to wait for a grant, but we do have to wait for the county, since it's about, I would say, almost twice the price if we go and do that to an outside contractor. More to come about that, but, so rest assured, council already set that money aside during the budgeting process last fall, so the $196,000 that is budgeted for that is already accounted for in all of the finance planning that we're doing. So don't, don't worry that other projects will take that away, it is set aside for that request per council's directions.
I have a question.
Hey?
When I look at that map, I'm in section two, and I see section three, but I don't see anything in section one, and it seems like their roads are absolutely terrible over here.
Section one has a section on Wrangler, and I believe that includes drainage, Craig, I don't remember that.
I see it.
Correct, yeah, so it's from, or sorry, I said from, I said from 1083 to Bronco. It's actually, we're doing, you know, Wrangler from 1093 to Longhorn.
Okay.
That is, you know, and Bronco had the drainage improvements, so it is on.
Oh, wait a minute, Bronco was never finished, they stopped.
Well, we only, yeah, the grant only covered a portion of it.
Yeah, it backs up where you stop, so if we could finish that one more little acre, no, it's not. That's right in front of my, is that my?
Yeah, but Bronco was slated for, basically, you know, if the county finishes the other sections this year, because there's on the, it's on their, basically, request, that Bronco, basically, in section ones and the piece in section two, would get allocated for the next fiscal year, so request next year from the county.
That's the average time on these situations.
They're noted for rebuild.
Yeah.
On that road.
By the counties?
No, not, not, I didn't finish. We've been talking about this for two years, and I've lived here for almost six, and I've seen one road more recently go in, and then I've seen the overlay of one other, and that's it. That being said, where do we stand on the grant situation? Is it common that it takes this long to get an answer from a grant administrator? Do we have those answers? Is, I mean, is there anything, how do we go forward? Are we going to wait another two years?
I'm so sorry, Courtney, we just gave the answer, that they, they have not begun to award the category that we're in, we've already been denied for low to moderate income, which we did apply, so now we are waiting for them to open the remaining funds to urgent need, which is the category that we still, still waiting for. So, yes, it's.
So we're, we're basically.
And it does take years.
Off at night.
Feel free.
In low to, since there's money set aside, I mean, obviously, the priority for all CEBG projects is low to moderate income, you know, in the non, non-low to moderate income areas, it can take a while, and we're kind of at the mercy of the GLO, so if anybody has good connections with the Texas Land Commission, there you go. But, yeah, we're just, we're kind of just waiting on the state to say, okay, we've allocated all the funds, and really, at least my understanding, how the grant, grant, different grant administrators explained to us, is now we're kind of in this period of making sure all the projects in the LMI areas, low to moderate income areas, are going to use those funds, because then if they don't use them, those funds are returned to the state, and they can do more work for the non-LMI areas. So that's kind of the gray area or the zone that we're in right now, just waiting for the state to say, all right, we definitely have enough money, go. We're hopeful, the grant writers hoping that we'll get that letter from the GLO, but until we see the money hit the bank, it's never guaranteed, so.
I think we reported two meetings ago, could be three, that the representatives from the GLO office came and visited with us, and we went through this grant and the application, making sure they had everything they needed, and they're still hopeful, and didn't give us any reason to think that this is going to fail or be denied at this point, so, again, we're just, the wait stage. But if you live on Wagon, we haven't forgotten about you, we're still waiting on that. Are any other council members question or comment about the roads at this point? All right. Item 11, consider and take action on ordinance of the city council of Simonton, Texas authorizing EDC A, a type A economic development corporation, to undertake any projects that are type B, EDC may undertake, under chapter 505 of the Texas Local Government Code. Okay, on this item, folks that are, that are not, we're not here last week, correct me if I'm wrong, Phil, due to the size of our city, EDC A can be allowed to do projects that are typically under EDC B's category. The money is spent from EDC A budget, so we don't spend the other EDC's money, but they could take on a limited number of projects, types of projects. And so, city council, because we're, we're sitting as council now, is being asked to allow EDC A, approve EDC A, to do a type B project. It'll be discussed further about what the project is in a little bit, when we get to the EDC A meeting, and then back in the city council meeting, but that's the gist. And so the project at hand is the city hall expansion, we'll get more into that in a little while. Do you have anything to add? Do I give a?
No, specifically, it's under section 504.171 of the Local Government Code.
Thank you. 171. All right, council, do we have a motion to authorize EDC A to undertake any project that a type B EDC may undertake?
I'll make a motion.
I second.
Any discussion?
This goes a lot to your answer, Ms. Angela, that you asked earlier.
We can't really interact with her right now, because we're in the middle of a vote, but we'll talk more about what the total project is in the next.
Any discussion, so I was just trying to answer.
Okay, but not to, not to the public, if you don't want. All righty, all in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Any opposed?
Nay.
So I think we have all in favor, with the exception of council member Cox. Thank you, everybody. So item 12 is to adjourn, you don't have to go anywhere, but we're adjourning as the city council, and then our next meeting, we're going to open right now, is the Economic Development Corporation regular board meeting, and I'll turn that over to the, I guess I didn't give the closing time, what is it, 6:58?
Okay.
And our board president is Justin Uro.
6:58, 6:59, and we do have a forum, is everybody present? So with that, the second item on here is to, is for public comments, and Janey, were there any public comments?
Do you want to speak here, Mr. Sabresuwa?
Yes. I do, I do have, call me a high. I was involved when the city first started the EDCs, and I understood the purpose of the EDCs, and at the time, the EDCs did not have any money, and so there was not a whole lot that we could get involved in, and I see that a really good reason for the EDC to be involved in the projects as you have now, and I want to applaud the council for passing this ordinance to allow A to do a B project, because I understand that you don't have enough people yet to seat a B board, and so I want to applaud y'all for passing this ordinance. I did not understand the reason that it was not approved last time, but I will applaud y'all, I will also say to the council that I am going to put my name in the hat to be on B board, if you're looking for more members to be on B board, and I know that, I went back and read the laws, I don't know what our bylaws say, I don't know what they are particularly, but I know the laws of Texas, you can only have no more than four council members on the board, and so you need three more members, I am going to be one of the volunteers to be on B board, and I think that we will find some people to help you do that, so we can get B board back up and active, and take some burden away from the city council. So, anyway, I want to applaud y'all for passing that, I think the expansion of city hall is something that's greatly needed. Thank you, council.
Appreciate it, thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, next item, on three, on this one, considering take action on a project to partially fund the infrastructure improvement project that provides expanded public safety facilities and are generally municipally owned improvements that are related to business enterprises that create and retain primary jobs, so there's section 505.155 of the Texas Local Government Code. On that one, Craig, I'm going to refer to you, I know you've done a lot of information on that, so you have information on that project you'd like to share?
Um, sorry, I'm trying to do some quick math, talking to the city hall project.
Yes.
Okay, all right, let me pull this up real quick, and trying to do some quick math to answer a couple of questions, but let me at least go through this, and then we can talk from there, so. Just kind of giving you a history of where, not a detailed history, kind of quick overview. You know, the city hall project, obviously, it was, you know, it was born out of some discussions from a previous council, RA council. Basically, the city award grant was 219,000, I think the accountant now has got some interest bear to it, so it's a little bit more, I think 239, somewhere in there. So it was to do three things, so to do two, three things, create additional space, and I've got a drawing for anybody who hasn't seen it yet, just here, but create additional space next door for all the pump operations, so we can store the pumps, store the hoses, basically open up some garage space over here. It would also expand the council chambers, a few, going off of memory, 20 or so feet that way, so create some additional space in here, 20 to 30 feet, if I remember correctly. And then there is a bathroom currently in, in the existing garage that is, of course, not ADA and different things, but it's not really a good emergency management type of facility, it's just kind of a simple sink and toilet, essentially. So basically, this would make this bathroom ADA, but also expand, have a shower area for it, obviously, anybody who's worked emergency, if you're, you're here for a few days, you start to smell accordingly. to smell accordingly. And also, create some hookups and stuff in there for washer and dryer, if the city wanted to put washer and dryer, so then anybody who's here could have that ability, but at least it would have the hookups. We received four bids on February 28th, and I've got a summary of those four bids a little bit, in case anybody wants to see it. Basically, at that, at the March 19th meeting, it was decided to award the project, and I'm gonna butcher the name if I try to pronounce it right now, off the top of my head, or seeing it. And then, we've had some questions on when the grant has to start, and really, we just have to have the funds obligated and contracts signed by the end of the year. So, just to kinda summarize that timing. This is kind of, you know, again, an existing footprint. Here's, or sorry, it's only 12 feet going that way, my mismemory, but new garage space, pushing that wall out about 20 feet, or 12 feet, sorry, and then the additional restroom. So, takes council member, council chambers here from 840 square feet to, you know, an additional, or sorry, increases it from 564 to 840. Doesn't change anything with the existing space in those bathrooms, creates 1,300 square feet of garage, again, for kinda the pump operations, or if the city decides to use it for some other purpose, it could. And then, of course, the washer and dryer and bathroom over in that area for emergency management. Just kind of a rendering of what the fund looks like. Everything outside of the blue is existing City Hall. Everything to the right is kinda this proposed. It's essentially kinda mirroring the other side, the existing side of City Hall. This is just a blow up of that area of, the areas we're working in. This was, these were the bid results for the total project. And basically, what we had is that had a surplus, or had a deficit, sorry, a deficit of funds that were needed to construct the full project. So we went through these options at the March meeting. Basically, this was the option, just recapping, this is the option that at the time, council voted on. And so, basically, the current status, just from a pure engineering standpoint, current status is basically, contractor has filed his bonds and insurance for the project, has signed the contracts, and we're just waiting for the city to execute those contracts.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Does it include the ceilings?
I believe, yes. I believe so.
Awesome.
Yes. What, you don't...
You don't like the decorating or...
And included, and included kinda painting the whole thing, so then we've got fresh paint around this room, so you don't have those 12 feet as partially painted and the rest not, you know, currently. Because the other thing, part of that, and here, let me go back to the big view. The other thing, part of this, to try to create and maximize some space, is we, you know, in this plan, council basically rotates from there to here, and then that way, we can kinda fill this whole, that whole wall with seats and everything. And that also frees up the city to kinda move the TVs around, have kinda TVs here or over there, a combination. That kinda AV exact stuff of these TVs is not necessarily in the contract, but we've added in there for some wiring, so the city could do it when they, when they want to.
The city also has a budget line item from the current budget we're in, that I wanna say it's $9,500.
For technology, I mean?
For technology in this room.
So, again, these are, these are the options. When we talked about the award, these are the options that we kinda looked at. Just again, wanted to recap, just so everybody had fresh information. Award the contract as is, or keep the contract as it is. We worked with the contractor back then. Nothing shows us that this would change at this point. But basically, since the bathroom is off by itself, we could deduct the restroom out of it, and the city could do that at a later date, at a different contractor of their choosing, and so and so forth. So basically, at this point, what we do is we would, if you wanted to go this route and save the 90, or $45,000, almost $46,000, basically, you'd sign the contract at your next council meeting, we would basically bring you a change order that would deduct that from the contract. And so, that's how we would keep kosher with the contract rules. The other option we had kinda talked about is kinda working with the contractor to reduce the scope even further. We do have a limitation in the grant that we can't reduce the scope by more than 25%. It's not saying necessarily, talking to the grant administrator, it's not necessarily saying we can't. It just becomes tricky, because at that point, would the contractors have, would the other contractors have structured their bids differently? And so, you kinda get in an area that the state has defined in this program, that above 25%, the other contractor should have had the ability to negotiate the same scope. But up to 25%, you don't have to, you can, but you don't have to. And so, that 25% would be a reduction of 73, almost $74,000, so there would still be a deficit that would need to cover the project cost of about $63,000. Where we could potentially make some of that up is essentially, we wouldn't expand chambers at this time. It's just that area would be basically more garage space. And also, right now, we have pouring concrete and a transition up to the new garages. We would eliminate, remove that as well. And so you would have a small area of grass that you'd have to pull the trailers on and over, which is probably not the world's worst idea, but the city could come in and repave that at a later date. Or use volunteers. The other option that we talked about is we could cancel the contractor, contract with them. We could authorize certain changes to the bid documents. We, and that's kinda up to council of how you'd wanna kinda refocus this project, and then we would rebid the project. Obviously, there's a cost associated with changes, and there's a cost associated with rebidding the project. And I'm not saying that just to try to discourage anything, I'm just saying it because that is, that is what it is. The potential downsides, and I have seen this on a City Hall project that's now been bid three times for another city. Obviously, this is the rebid, design fees, previous contractors may not bid the project. They do a lot of work on these bids, and they, contractors get a little mad when they, when they have to submit new bids. Prices could increase. That's just something in the public law, you know, public bidding, we're held to. Had a ditch project, two ditch projects that were almost not identical, but similar enough, and between the month that they bid separately, prices increased by 10 to 15%. So, and so it's, it's just a, it's a risk that could exist with that. Not saying that it will happen, but it is something that can happen, just based on the timing. Yeah, that's the last one. Did I summarize everything? Questions on that?
Craig, did you find any answer for the...
So, I was trying to find the exact number, so...
This is not your meeting.
So...
It's Justin, who's recording.
Okay. Got it.
All right. So, in the, in the fund balance that council has with the grant and the, I guess, the interest that has been earned on that money, you've got $230,000 and some change. The design fees, which includes, yeah, the design fees, which includes some construction management and some bid phase services, was about $6,800, $6,700 to be exact. And then there's grant administration dollars of about $9,000 that the grant administrator has out there. So those are kinda the two pools of money outside of the contract. What I'm trying to find is, we did talk with the grant writer when we were coming up with what was available, is that there could be some additional expenses with the foundation and everything, and I don't know if that's the difference that comes up, because I get a little bit number when I summarize everything, assuming my math, I didn't fumble the number. I've got about $4,600 that basically is, in the grant is being used. And I know when I told the city, you know, we've, we've got the, you know, the 200 and, or the 63, the difference of the 68, or, let me go to the exact number. When we kinda gave the remaining funds that are needed, I know we talked about, well, we do need to allocate a little bit, just in case things are discovered, so I haven't found yet, is that, that difference there? But I know we had a conversation with the grant administrator on cost overruns or miscellaneous changes that could come up during construction, so we tried to leave ourselves a little bit of, of leeway on that, but I hadn't found that number yet, but I will keep looking for that, so.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Craig, would you just read us that number that says remaining funded by the city reserve?
So remaining...
I can't read it from here.
Oh, 137,000, $137,013.
Okay.
And that is...
We haven't changed that from the original. Just making sure, I...
Yes.
Justin, so that you're aware, the reason I ask that question is, we show a balance in our ARPA account of, the original, let me back up. The original awarded grant was for $219,000.
Correct.
We put it in a money market account, we got $239,907.04. This contract price, total contract price was 295,575.72. The available grants listed here show 158. I asked him why the difference when the actual available grants, according to our accounts, is $239,000, because that is an $81,000 difference.
Yeah, so some of that, so, out of the 239, from my notes here, out of the 200 and, it's not my phone, sorry, Jenny. I was typing in this number, and then I stopped. So there is $67,800 in, basically, the grant administrator, the design, bidding services, and then construction phase services.
That are not line itemed on here.
What's that?
That are not line itemed on here?
No, that aren't line itemed on there.
So that's still $12,000 short, $13,000 short?
And I think when I did my math, like, if you're looking at my presentation, when I did my math, I, there's two things that I should note on this, go back one, two things I should note on this page. So, this value is what the city had spent to date as of this present, as of the March meeting. So the city had spent $60,000. There's an additional, I just deleted it, without writing it down, there's an additional, there's additional $16,800 that are allocated in the grant administrator and construction phase services. So, in reality, when I put this number on there, I should have included that total price. And so, you do that math, it shows a little bit more that's available. The other thing too, and this is, again, this is an issue on our part, is we should have also included this as what is in your account that's available to spend, but we just included what the, what the grant was. So there's, this slide, if you're looking at it, doesn't include the interest and doesn't include the additional that's been approved as far as services go. So...
Appreciate the information. That was pretty much so everybody can understand where we were at, where the money was coming from, so there wouldn't be any question on where it was at. I know there were some other funds for the bathroom that we had, Lori, do you remember?
Yeah, in the budget, the city allocated $15,000, let me look at my notes. We have a budgeted line item of $15,000 for that bathroom, because the lines froze, and at that time, we just budgeted for repair. So that $15,000 is available to contribute to this shortage, or shortage, I guess.
Justin, has EDC A ever presented the budget to City Council for EDC A?
Maybe the budget for...
We, as EDC A, are to present City Council with a budget of how we would like them to spend our money. Has that been done? So I would make a motion that we move this item until we, our next meeting, so that we can, in fact, meet and decide how we want, how much of this money that we feel like EDC A needs to utilize out of those, because those funds were set aside in our budgeting meeting last year for different purposes.
Not for this, not for, not for this board's funds.
Understand, but EDC A has legally to present a budget to City Council as telling them or directing them, as EDC A, once we are constituted, how we want them to spend our money. So it doesn't make sense to take action on this particular item right now, when we don't have a final number, we don't know what that actually looks like, we're just basically saying, eh, we don't care. And instead, we could come back and say...
We know what funds are available, and we do know that nothing has been budgeted to be used out of those funds as of today.
That is not what I was told and/or informed of. We pay for things like NICSIL and all kinds of stuff out of EDC A, and that budget has not been presented to council. Therefore, I would like to make a motion that we do not vote on this until we have, have presented our budget to, as EDC A, to City Council.
So as a matter of procedure, Jamie or Phil, maybe one of y'all might be available to guide Justin on, he needs to take this motion through.
Yeah, so, so then, since there's a motion on the consideration to take action on this project, to, I guess, table to a later meeting would be the motion, whenever, once the next EDC A board meeting is set, you just ask for a second, and then if there's a second, take a vote. If there's no second, then the motion dies for lack of second.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Did you make a motion?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I made a motion. I made a motion to, just to move it to our next meeting, so that we can be capable of presenting a budget to the City Council.
Is there a second?
Oh, okay.
Of course she will.
Of course she will. Sure.
Taking them out. Excellent.
So we take a vote on, ayes or four?
Yes.
Yep.
Against?
Aye.
Thanks.
Three, two.
Yeah, so then the item is still up, up for discussion.
Okay. The orig, the original?
Yes, yeah, it's, we're still, still in that original item.
Motion dies there. Is there any other discussion going? Yeah?
So do you have any idea of what our budget for EDC A looks like? Because I don't. And I don't think anybody else at this table does either.
So EDC A has a balance...
Ma'am, this is no offense.
You ask, and I can participate?
I am.
You ask if anybody else does, Courtney.
If you did.
You ask if anybody else does.
So EDC A, at this, at this point, this is cash position only, has $244,497.26. What is paid from EDC A is one-third of our NICSIL obligation, and to my knowledge, that's $4,000 annually, and $75 a month for one part of the mowing that happens with our contractor. So, you're correct, those expenses would need to be deducted, but you're, because we can break out the calculator, but you're well below your $244,000 available balance.
Again, but that's not the answer to my question. I asked you what the balance was, but not the, but I asked him what the budget is. Do you have any idea of what that budget looks like?
Yeah, I haven't created one.
So we're not, in fact, following our own bylaws?
So the budget was created when the council did the budget last year, and frankly...
EDC is responsible for building a budget.
The EDC budget is part of the City Council budget, and you voted on...
But this isn't your meeting. So... This is the EDC's meeting. It's, we are...
So Phil, I feel like he needs some direction on how to proceed.
Yeah, so, the rec, so then, we have a discussion, possibly take action instead of regular EDC, or meeting at such a date and time. So we'll figure that part out here in a moment, about when we need to have a meeting. You have a balance available, and those funds are available, though we don't have a budget set yet, other than the fact that you have a budgeted item, those two budgeted items that were mentioned. You can propose this project under this plan as part of a budget item. And then if you set a budget, even though you have, wouldn't necessarily have a standing budget, because you don't have obligation right now, other than those two other obligations. So, in essence, everything in your budget is in a general fund, if you will, since nothing is actually itemized or required, or there's no other obligations that have been set by EDC A, that I'm aware of, based on what was just mentioned. So you can set this item as a, just along the same line of discussion, you can still, as a board, set this as a project, as a proposal to the council to approve this project. You can set the motion, subject to available funding. You can set the motion of approve a project up no more than $75,000. You can approve it... a project up no more than $75,000, you can approve it, you know, number 175,000, subject to administration of grant funds, you can, so there's, there's many things that can be done within the sort of project motion that sets or protects some of these concerns. It could be, set the, set it at X amount of dollars, subject to the next meeting we have setting a budget for EDC A, right? So you can create it that way, when you come together to create that budget or that potential line item obligation, you already know, hey, there's where some of that is going to go, et cetera, et cetera. So you can know what those obligations are at the next EDC A meeting, if you wanted to talk to paying for roads out of cycle or however all that works out, you could set budgeted items for that and then propose it as a project. So all that can be done as part of, and you know, and just like a council meeting, we just set, hey, these are the items I want on the agenda and we have those meetings.
Those can be discussed in that later.
As far, yeah, said as far as regu- setting regular meetings and what you want on future agendas and things like that can be set. Of course, it doesn't have to always happen as a joint meeting, it's just a level of convenience when we have everyone here, right? But, but it doesn't, it can happen at any time off cycle, of course. And then we just set those meetings moving forward as was mentioned and then, well, I won't mention it here, but setting up EDC B sounds like a great idea too, so, but that's not this board's problem.
Okay, so now we're, with us being able to move that to that, to the last item, to the future item, where are we at if this item stands?
So, yeah, so we're still on item three and so since there was a motion to table and that motion was denied, then it's still on discussion and so we'll need another motion for that item to propose the project and then we'll open up for public comments. If, if there's an approved project, we'll open up to public comments, take adjustments to that project if public has comments and then eventually we'll, when we reconvene at council, council will take a resolution to approve that project.
Do we have a motion to fund this project out of EDC A?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we take a vote. Okay, now, take a vote, all four?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Two, three, four, two. So the motion carries. Now we open the floor for a public hearing?
Public, yes, public hearing on the proposed project.
Number four?
We can answer questions.
Questions and comment, discussion?
Can I speak?
Please.
Um, Christy Smith, 36630 Canyon. So I don't look in at City Hall, many of you on the council three have not flooded, but when a flood happens, and it will, this place becomes emergency management, crazy, computers, software, mass people in and out of here. That bathroom is going to be a plus because some people were here for five days and didn't get a shower, Jennifer and Erica and other people in the past. So it would be, oh, easy to kind of bathroom, but when you have 50 people here, three bathrooms is pretty essential and probably to state compliance if we had handicap. Storing this, you know, everyone wants to know our assets as a city, storing these pumps, I mean, they're basically getting weathered right now as we speak, they have a tarp. So I feel like the longer you guys delay, the more your building supplies are going to go up, like it's no brainer, my husband does bid, they last 30 days and then they go up. So the more we delay, there is a need for this chamber to be bigger, there is a need for a bathroom during emergency management, and there's a need to get these things protected. I mean, it's crazy and we filled this room last week and we will keep bringing people to fill this room to be a voice in our community.
Any other comments, concerns?
Did what she said.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry, Kevin, Maylow, 806, Pony Lane.
And the comment was did.
No, did what she said. Oh, sorry.
Let the record show.
Comments? No other comments, we close the public hearing portion?
And so the, as we've had public comments, this is an opportunity for the board to consider if there needs to be any amendments to the proposal, if we want to get, I know that the motion was to partially fund the project, but the question is if there was a certain amount that you wanted to specify as a board, no greater than, no less than, I mean, with discussion of there being potentially, and I'm not going to say there are, but potentially a few extra dollars in interest, et cetera, that could help cut down the cost to, or cut down the excess, right, cost and correct, um, okay, yeah, that maybe EDC doesn't want to take on the exact half, because I think the exact number, if I may ask, through reminded of the exact number, do you have that in there, I know we did last?
We've discussed $76,037.56.
That was kind of the perfect split of the, what, 137, 75, 13? Correct. So that was, that was what was originally discussed when the council determined to attempt to split the funds between pulling from what was available to council and then what was potentially available to EDC and so that amount. So it could be a discussion where the motion is to cap it at said number or drop it some and say, hey, we'll do 70s, whatever that might be, just to set a definitive number and that way they have the, council has the direction going forward, once you put that hat back on, on what EDC A is obligated.
Okay. Are there any discussions, any changes, any motions to make changes?
I'd like to make a motion just to change it or set it at a $75,000 mark, simply because once EDC B could be formed, those monies could come from a different fund as well and none of the numbers that we are receiving, none match. Everything is different. You've got a different grant number here, a different grant number here, available grant numbers here, yeah, we've got 137,000, but there's $81,000 missing from the available grants, none of it matches. So if we can meet again at our following meeting and set the EDC A's budget and still apply this at least at a maximum of $75,000, it's a thousand dollars less than half, but it also protects us so that we can set up our budget. We are seeing absolute, we're not getting the, the right numbers here.
So if I'm hearing that there's a, a motion to modify to make it a maximum of 75?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so the motion, is there a second?
One second, Justin, what is the number again that you said that we?
The number we talked about when this was approved originally by council was $76,037.56. Why would you make it for what?
We didn't approve.
From, from EDC A and from Texul. That was the initial number we were talking about.
Yeah.
And that's the amount that was discussed during council two split up, should this board approve that amount? The current, I guess amendment is to cap that at 75 versus the 76 or 37.
Less.
Is there a second?
Is there any math to that? We go less.
Sorry, I, I apologize. Did you say, you just wanted to set it at 75,000?
That's, that's what you-
Yes, I was just making sure.
Yes, 75 is, is the number you gave me, correct?
Yes, yes, absolutely, sorry.
Is there a second?
Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, you, you can discuss.
How about if we did the, the amount that we need to cap it there's logic?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just saying, cap it at 76 until we can establish our budget and then that way we can get a better idea of what these numbers actually look like. Like I said, if you take the 70-
Can't change it.
If you take the 76, 37-
So the motion does not die, Justin, and then we can do it again if you want me to.
Yeah, so to answer your question, if the motion stands not amended, then we'll just need a second or die for lack of second or vote on that. And then you can motion to, we have another motion to set it at 76, et cetera, and then that we can go forward.
We're still in the discussion page right now?
Yeah, of, of number, on number five, yes.
Say, could you repeat, repeat what you said, please?
I just wondered, since this is the discussion part, that could Courtney amend the motion right now to make it that number that we need, which I need to write down, 76,000?
Yeah, we all need to write it down at this point, 76,037.56.
Which is what we already have it budgeting at, is it?
It was requested.
That was what council discussed when this project was approved, that half, that, that number would come from, Texul and half would come from.
Right, and since council can't obligate EDC A funds, the actions we're taking are just to establish the ability, establish EDC A, like we did last week, et cetera, and now we're to that point where as an EDC A project, it can now go back to council to, to authorize that project. So that's kind of the, the process. Cause you, cause council can't just spend, you know, EDC or B funds, EDC A can't spend council, et cetera, et cetera, right? So.
Go back to, to base questions. Can she amend hers or?
If there's a desire, you can amend your own motion, yes. If not, then it just goes for a second and then if it dies, then we'll just have a new motion.
I, I made a motion to cap it at 76,037.56.
For lack of second?
Another motion.
That motion dies?
Let Janie get her, okay. Okay.
And I'll make a motion that we cap it at 76,037.56, is that correct?
Oh, sir. Okay, we've got it. I've been seconded, do we, all four?
Aye.
Nays? Okay, then. We'll move to next item. Discuss possibility to take action on setting a regular EDC A board meeting, city, date and time.
Yeah, I just wanted to add this, I mean, Mr. President, to the agenda, just to get, because obviously there's interest, we're, we're building right EDC A, EDC B, there's interest, and so start establishing a regular meeting or at least have the chance to discuss when it might make sense. Of course, we can continue to do these sort of joint meetings to where the EDC can always meet after the council meeting or before, depending on people's schedules, right? You can, you don't, all, so these particular ones needed to be in a certain sequence because certain things were being approved across, but they don't always have to be that way because EDC A could come up with a list of proposed projects and then the next council meeting, they could be discussed, et cetera. So there's a lot of flexibility with the timing, it doesn't have to be set. Now, of course, being an open meeting, we'll need to post and have agenda items and things like that, but those are all things that will be done and we could go. I think there's a good point in agenda item being to, to review the bylaws as it states there, to, to look at other proposed projects, to look at current funding obligations, et cetera, and all that will be part of it, once we start setting up a regular EDC A meetings.
Justin, I would like to suggest doing that as soon as possible, going into budgeting season, because that has not been done since 2018, I think. So the money's just kind of been sitting there and we need to be able to just, so that we don't have to go through something like this and we can tell the people, like, we're not just holding on to this money for this emergency type situation, but in fact, we're going to spend it for things like this.
My next regular city council meeting would be May 21st, if you all have any thoughts on doing it at the same day.
I would do, I was going to actually suggest six o'clock.
Council meeting at 6:30?
I'm saying yes, but I'm not on this.
I, I would actually like to see it the same day as the city council meeting, do it at six o'clock and then we'll follow it, council meeting at 6:30.
Do we need a, a motion to set that?
No, there's no motion to be taken to set that. We've noted it and we'll get it posted now. I do ask if there are any particular agenda items to make sure to have on it on a regular, and that way we'll start getting that routine on a regular basis. And so because we're discussing the regular EDC board meeting, date and time, are there any standing items? I mean, other than, obviously we'll do a finance review, we'll do a current status of funds, yeah, review bylaws on the next one, if that's what we want.
The, the review of the bylaws won't be a standing item on there.
Okay, right, okay, perfect.
We're not following the bylaws as it is because we haven't met, so that's what I'm getting. We just need other than that.
And then, right, and then we don't-
Update our, our-
Right, and then we don't need to have, if, if there's any other items that come up, we don't need to wait till meeting day and to the agenda, they can just be sent. Janie, are you willing to take, okay, so Janie's willing to kind of take on that secretary role now and help build the agenda? Right, as long as it's posted, just like with the council, as long as it's posted 72 hours, open meeting, item can be discussed, et cetera.
Okay. That covers everything on this agenda. Any other discussions? Okay, we'll move on to item seven and adjourn this meeting at 7:39.
Okay. We'll call the city council special session meeting to order at 7:40 PM. Do we have any public comments on this section of meetings?
Karen Tappersula, head of Keep Simonton Beautiful. On behalf of Keep Simonton Beautiful, I want to thank everybody that came out and supported us this Saturday. We had our, our spring roundup, we had a lot of support from the community, which we're appreciative of, we're appreciative of our sponsors, which were Benchmark, Simonton Pets, Vincent Morales, and Keep Calm Hair Salon. I want to thank the board members of Keep Simonton Beautiful, all of our volunteers, and a special shout out to two of our council members, Justin Vudrow and Kelly Matula, for all of their help that day. I couldn't have gotten through the day without the both of them. And we, one of the things that we did this year was we had a recycling art contest and on behalf of Lily Garcia, who won our best of show, she would like to present her project that won her best of show to the city hall.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
It's so cool. It's, it's a little insomatic camera that she made out of recycled materials and then she's got little pictures of the Valley Lodge Country Club and different things from around Simonton. So she really took her time, did some research and did a great job.
She lives in section one, actually, in the big house over by the country club. Very sweet girl.
What age group?
She was a sixth grader.
Sixth grade.
She was our only sixth grader, but most of the others were kindergarten, 30s.
How many entries? I saw lots of them come here, but do you have an idea-ish?
Almost 30, I know we tagged 25, I think 25, if not 75.
And we were a little late getting it out, so everyone really liked it, so we're hoping to continue that and to grow it.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Karen.
Thank you.
Oh, I had a question. This is the first time you did pet adoptions, wasn't it?
Yes, and we actually had a little pet adoption.
Well, I heard about one.
One did get adopted, so we were thankful for that. Hopefully, if we, if they want to come back, hopefully we can get some more adopted.
It sounds great.
I told them about the fall one because they're interested. They were, they really liked it. They're asking.
Thank you so much, wonderful event. Any other public comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. Item three is new business. Consider, well, we'll just follow the numbering convention, but we don't have anything that is separate from new business. Item four is consider and take action on a resolution to approve the proposed project from EDC A to partially fund an infrastructure improvement project that provides expanded public safety facilities and is generally municipally owned, improvement that's related to business enterprises that create or retain primary jobs. to business enterprises that create or retain primary jobs. This is $76,037.50 that E D C A has proposed to fund the partial shortfall for the ARCA project. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, if I may, I just, just to remind that this is the first of two readings of the resolution, so at the next regular meeting, we'll do the second reading of the resolution.
Terrific, thank you. Item five then is not, well, is item five needed? Council, this is consider and take action on alternate funding source from the contract ordered to, I'm going to say Badger, but like Craig, I should probably decline, Badger LaBinka for the total bid, 295, 575, 72 for the center city hall renovation. This item was added in case E D C A decided not to participate, but are there any other proposals or changes that need to be made?
I'm going to ask that we, I don't necessarily not table it, but get a quantifiable number because again, this number doesn't match that number, so on the 76 that we got from E D C A, that's perfect, that's great, but we don't ultimately know that we won't need an alternate funding source for whatever is over and above the remaining 76 that I believe we were given.
I appreciate that. That's not the intent of this need of this item and if E D C A has already approved, council is still standing by the previous decision to fund the other half of a tax pool, then there's no change that's needed.
I have a question on it. So, that's, I know that's not what this item was for, but we can bring up another item in another meeting, should there be a shortfall or need for more funding that could be added at a later date to me, correct? Okay, which would, which would solve that?
Yeah, that was my, that was my question.
Okay, all right, so item five is no action. Item six is adjourned to executive session. Thank you, everybody, for coming. You are welcome to come back in a few minutes, but if anybody decides this is done. All right. The city council of the city of Simonton, Texas ended its closed executive session at 8:48 P M. on the 23rd day of April 2024. We are reconvening an open session, item seven. Item eight is consider and take action resulting from the exec, executive session, there's none to be taken at this time. Our next city council meeting is, I said it earlier, May 21st?
May 21st.
It's our next regular city council meeting. And we didn't have reports, but I would just show the good news that lock cameras are being installed next week in Simonton. Finally. And item 10, adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming and staying late. We sure appreciate it.
8:49?
Yep. 8:49.